Good afternoon and welcome everyone to this giant work session of Eugene City Council and the Lane County Board of Commissioners. I am happy to welcome our colleagues from the county with us. I now call the February 10, 2021 City Council Work Session to order.
And now that it's 12:01, I will say good afternoon, everyone, and I now call the February 10, 2021 Board of Commissioners Work Session to order.
Thank you all for joining us in this remote meeting format we're using in response to Governor Brown's Stay Home Save Lives order. The format enables us to meet and take care of business while keeping everyone safe. For work sessions like this one where there is no opportunity for public comment, those wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the livestream available on the website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by calling into one of the phone numbers listed for this meeting on the Public Webcast and Meeting Materials webpage. And as always, other forms of communication with me, the city councils, and the commissioners are available, including email and voicemail. And thank you again for joining us. I believe I am turning to the county administrator to kick this meeting off.
Thank you, Mayor, and Chair, and councilors and commissioners. Good afternoon to the public watching. Thanks for joining us. The city manager and I spoke, and we wanted to just provide some introductory comments here. Sarai Johnson, our Joint Housing and Shelter Strategist, will walk you through a presentation. But I wanted to just kick this off by sharing that stating, I think, what's the obvious, that the last year did not go as most of us had planned on many fronts. And certainly in terms of this body of work, many of you, I should also say, welcome to the new councilors and to our new commissioner. Welcome to your first joint elected official meeting between Lane County and the City of Eugene. For those of you who were here in 2019, you recall in May of 2019, we had a joint elected official meeting with the Lane County Board of Commissioners and the Eugene City Council. And we talked about the plans for our shelter and housing work moving forward. Both bodies subsequently approved what has been referred to as the TAC report or Housing and Shelter Strategy Plan. And our plan at that time, we had a really good plan moving forward. And then about eight months later, a global pandemic hit and caused us to adjust on the fly to a lot of what had been planned. And so I want to just touch on some of those things and, I think, make the overall point that while things didn't go as we had necessarily intended them to back in 2000, as we intended back in 2019, we still have made a significant amount of progress. And I want to point to a few of these things. First, you know, I think everyone appreciates that we rely, it's not just Lane County and the City of Eugene and other public sector partners in the community. We really rely on other agencies, nonprofit, private organizations to support our housing and shelter needs in the community. Those organizations, namely the Mission and St. Vincent de Paul, and the services that they provide were significantly impacted because of the pandemic. So the capacity at the Mission, the capacity at Dust to Dawn was cut about in half. And so it put Lane County and the City of Eugene in the position of really needing to step up and identify new solutions just to fill that gap, let alone the gaps that we knew existed prior to the pandemic. Really great work has happened on that front to respond on the fly and identify new solutions. The City of Eugene has been extremely active and aggressive at opening up smaller, smaller scale rest stops for individuals at numerous sites to allow for that emergency shelter. Lane County has purchased hotel rooms for individuals. We've had really great success with our pallet shelter program, which is a new, new infrastructure that we've deployed not only in the metro area, but to our rural partners to use as a strategy to shelter individuals particularly during the winter months. We've made significant progress on our shelter and navigation center, and we're able to purchase a facility at 100 River Avenue through this COVID process and retrofit that facility for short-term use for a COVID recovery center for unhoused individuals with the plans to convert it to to a longer-term shelter and navigation center after the pandemic is over. And then permanent supportive housing. We've, you know, had some really outstanding progress on that front. We, last week, opened the 51 units of permanent supportive housing for chronically homeless individuals at our campus on MLK, a partnership with Homes for Good and with a number of private partners from Peace Health and Trillium and Pacific Source, the City of Eugene, and others who participated in that effort. We've broken ground on our 20-plus unit permanent supportive housing facility for families, for unhoused families with children at 13th and Tyler. We're near breaking ground for our new permanent supportive housing structure on 11th and Charnelton. And so the list goes on and on, and Sarai will walk through some of these things. But we just wanted to start with, while there is a lot of dire news, and to be sure, the challenges that we face remain. In many ways, they've grown even deeper. But one of the things that I've shared with our team at the county over the past year is, let's not waste a crisis as an opportunity to do some good. So with all of the challenges and the pain and the struggle of this past year, there's also an opportunity for us to look at these moments as catalytic opportunities to move forward and do some really good long-term, make some long-term progress. And so that is one of our goals here, is to come out of the pandemic set up for really longer-term success. And so while we are going through this challenging time, and we're going to have a lot of work to do once we get out of the pandemic, and it feels good, doesn't it, to even just think about coming out of the pandemic? That we are confident that we will come out not only with additional assets and infrastructure, but service supports and coordination and resiliency to make a lot of progress and headway in this body of work. And so with that, I will turn it over to Sarai, and we thank you all for your time and attention today.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mokraheisky. I'm going to share my screen with you all. I have a little bit of a presentation prepared. We'll get this party started. Fine show, play from start. All right. Thank you again for being here, and ultimately, thank you for the work that you started together back in 2018 in commissioning this report with the recommendations and the continuing efforts between the City of Eugene and Lane County to make this all come together. It's been really amazing to see, and of course, as Steve mentioned, we've had a year of many challenges and unforeseen events. But in the meantime, we have, I think, made some pretty good progress on some things. So we'll share about that and then give you an outlook over what we're going to be doing over the next 12 months with this work. So the goals for today are to understand our 12-month action plan. That's going to take up most of our time. We'll also be talking a little bit about numbers between 2019 and 2020 on the Homeless By Name List, so you can see some of the overall changes and shifts in numbers there. And we haven't started to dissect that too much yet, but I think that we'll have some good time to do that in the near future, so we can better understand what's working and what isn't. We'll also talk a little bit about the current funding landscape, but I will confess that part is a little bit shorter than it might, you might have hoped. But we will get those numbers to you as soon as we possibly can between the city and the county. And then ultimately, finish with a proposed JEO rhythm for 2021 around when we might want to meet as this whole group just to touch base and to make sure that we're bringing any policy decisions and direction questions to you. Can I say? We have, as you know, been using a homeless by name list over the last several years, starting in 2019. That's our first full year of data. And this has allowed us to take, to get a much better idea about who is coming into and leaving homelessness, how many people on any given month are living outside in places not meant for human habitation and/or in shelters. I don't have these numbers in this presentation, but just to give a refresher or an introduction to it, to our new councilors and commissioner. In Lane County overall, typically 80% of the population of people who are unhoused are unsheltered, and that is compared to 35% nationally as the average. So we're ahead of the curve on that in not a good way. And so we really have a lot of work to do to make up some ground on sheltering and making sure that people have access to housing. And that's, of course, why we're all here today. So the blue is the numbers from 2019, and the orange is 2020. As you can see, we did have some drops, which is, which is worth noting. So in 2019, our unduplicated count of everyone who accessed services for homelessness and indicated they were homeless was 9,679 people, which of course is more than we had ascertained in our point-in-time counts in the past. And so a good idea of how many people are out there experiencing homelessness, whether it's for the whole year or not, that's, that's the number of people. So this last year in 2020, we served 9,107. So that's a reduction of around 560-ish people. That's of interest. I think part of the question we have internally is about what, how much of this really had to do with the pandemic versus how much had to do with other resources becoming available. And so it's hard to draw straight lines between anything that we've done and these different results. But I think there's room for a lot of exploration in those numbers. The monthly average of people who were experiencing homelessness each month in 2019 was around 3,800, and in 2020, 3,500. So that has also gone down. And then our chronic homelessness number dropped for the first time, and that now is at 2,867 unduplicated people experiencing chronic homelessness, meaning that they've been homeless for at least
introductory comments here Sarai Johnson, our joint housing and shelter strategist will walk you through a presentation. But I wanted to just kick this off by sharing that stating, I think, what's the obvious that the last year did not go as most of us had planned. On many fronts and certainly in terms of this body of work. Many of you, I should also say, welcome to the new counselors and to our new commissioner, welcome to your first joint elected official meeting between Lane County and the city of Eugene. For those of you who were here in two thousand and nineteen, you recall in May of two thousand and nineteen, we had a joint elective official. Meeting with the Lane County Board of Commissioners and Eugene City Council, and we talked about. The the plans for our shelter and housing work moving forward. Both bodies subsequently approved what has been referred to as the TAC report or Housing and Shelter Strategy Plan. And our plan at that time, we had a really good plan moving forward and then about eight months later, a global pandemic hit. And caused us to adjust on the fly to a lot of what had been planned. And so I want to just touch on some of those things and and I think make the overall point. That while things didn't go as we had necessarily intended them to back in two thousand, as we intended back in two thousand and nineteen. We still have made a significant amount of progress. And I want to point to a few of these things first, you know, I think everyone appreciates that we rely, it's not just Lane County and the city of Eugene and other public sector. Partners in the community, we really rely on other agencies, nonprofit, private organizations to support. Our housing and shelter needs in the community, those organizations, namely the mission and St. Vincent de Paul. And the services that they provide were significantly impacted because of the pandemic, so the capacity at the mission, the capacity at Dust to Dawn. Was cut about in half. And so it put Lane County and the city of Eugene in the position of really needing to step up and identify new solutions just to fill that gap. Let alone the the gaps that we knew existed prior to the pandemic. And really great work has happened on that front to respond on the fly and identify new solutions, the city of Eugene. Has been extremely active and aggressive at opening up. Smaller, smaller scale. Rest stops for individuals at numerous sites to allow for that emergency shelter, Lane County has purchased hotel rooms for individuals. We've had really great success with our pallet shelter program, which is a new. New infrastructure that we've deployed, not only in the metro area, but to our rural partners to use the strategy to shelter individuals, particularly during the winter months. We've made significant progress on our shelter and navigation center and we're able to purchase a facility at one hundred River Avenue. Through this COVID process and retrofit that facility for short term use. For a COVID recovery center for unhoused individual, individuals with the plans to convert it to. To a longer term shelter and navigation center after the pandemic is over. And then permanent supportive housing, we've, you know, had some really outstanding progress on that front, we last week opened the fifty one. Units of permanent supportive housing for chronically homeless individuals. At our campus on MLK, a partnership. With homes for good and with a number of private partners from Peace Health and Trillium and Pacific Source. The city of Eugene and and others who participated in that effort, we've broken ground on our twenty plus unit permanent supportive housing. Facility for families, for unhoused families with children. At thirteenth and Tyler, we're near breaking ground. For our new permanent supportive housing structure on eleventh and Charnelton, and so the list goes on and on and. And Sarai will walk through some of these things, but we just wanted to start with, while there is a lot of dire news. And to be sure, the challenges that we face remain, in many ways, they've grown even deeper. But one of the things that I've shared with our team at the county over the past year is let's not waste a crisis as an opportunity to do some good. So with all of the challenges and. And the pain and the struggle of this past year, there's also an opportunity for us to look at these. Moments as catalytic opportunities to move forward and do some really good, long term. Some long, make some long term progress, and so that is one of our goals here is to come out of the pandemic. Set up for really longer term success, and so while we are going through this. Challenging time and we're going to have a lot of work to do once we get out of the pandemic and it feels good, doesn't it, to even just. Think about coming out of the pandemic. That we are confident that we will come out not only with additional assets and infrastructure, but service supports and coordination. And resiliency to make a lot of progress and headway in this body of work. And so with that, I will turn it over to Sarai and we thank you all for your time and attention today.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mokra Hyskey, I'm going to share my screen with you all, I have a little bit of a presentation prepared. We'll get this party started. Fine show, play from start. Alright, thank you again for being here and and ultimately, thank you for the work that you started together back in two thousand and eighteen and commissioning this. Report with the recommendations and the continuing efforts between the city of Eugene and Lane County to make this all come together. It's been really amazing to see and of course, as as Steve mentioned, we've had a year of many challenges and. Unforeseen events, but in the meantime, we have, I think, made some pretty good progress on some things, so we'll share about that and then give you an outlook over. What we're going to be doing over the next twelve months with this work. So the goals for today are to understand our twelve month action plan, that's going to take up most of our time. We'll also be talking a little bit about numbers between two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty on the homeless by name list, so you can see some of the overall changes and shifts in numbers there. And we haven't started to dissect that too much yet, but I think that we'll have some good time to do that in the near future. So we can better understand what's working and what isn't. We'll also talk a little bit about the current funding landscape, but I will confess that part is a little bit shorter than it might, you might have hoped. But we will get those numbers to you as soon as we possibly can between the city and the county. And then ultimately finish with a proposed JEO rhythm for two thousand and twenty one around when we might want to meet as this whole group. Just to touch base and to make sure that we're bringing any policy decisions and direction questions to you. We have, as you know, been using a homeless by name list over the last several years, starting in two thousand and nineteen, that's our first full year of data. And this has allowed us to take, to get a much better idea about who is coming into and leaving homelessness. How many people on any given month are living outside in places not meant for human habitation and or in shelters. I don't have these numbers in this presentation, but just to give a refresher or an introduction to it, to our new counselors and commissioner. In Lane County overall, typically eighty percent of the population of people who are unhoused are unsheltered and that is compared to thirty five percent nationally. As the average, so we're ahead of the curve on that in not a good way, and so we really have. A lot of work to do to make up some ground on on sheltering and making sure that people have access to housing and that's of course why we're all here today. So the blue is the numbers from two thousand and nineteen and the orange is two thousand and twenty. As you can see, we did have some drops, which is, which is worth noting, so in two thousand and nineteen, our unduplicated count of everyone who accessed services for homelessness and indicated they were homeless. Was nine thousand six hundred and seventy nine people, which of course is more than we had ascertained in our our point in time counts in the past, and so. A good idea of how many people are out there experiencing homelessness. Whether it's for the whole year or not, that's, that's the number of people, so this last year in two thousand and twenty, we served nine thousand one hundred and seven, so that's a reduction of around five hundred and sixty ish people. That's of interest, I think part of the question we have internally is about what, how much of this really had to do with the pandemic versus how much had to do with. Other resources becoming available, and so it's hard to draw straight lines. Between anything that we've done and and these different results, but I think there's room for a lot of exploration in those numbers. The monthly average of people who were experiencing homelessness each month in two thousand and nineteen was around thirty eight hundred and in two thousand and twenty, thirty five hundred. So that has also gone down. And then our chronic homelessness number dropped for the first time and that now is at twenty eight hundred and sixty seven unduplicated people. Experiencing chronic homelessness, meaning that they've been homeless for at least twelve months consecutively or. Several times instances of homelessness amounting to twelve months over the last three years, there's a little bit more to that definition, but I think you get the picture. So this is a significant change and one that we're really looking into to see what has, you know, what are we seeing with this population, are they getting housed, are they just. You know, finding some other place to be, we have definitely noticed that even with the reduction in shelter beds. That Steve mentioned at the beginning, we have also seen a reduction in the utilization of. Congregate shelters where people are sleeping and sharing space with a large group of other people, and so. This might also be part of why our numbers have dropped over two thousand and twenty, because a lot of services weren't available for a good chunk of. The or late spring, early summer. And most haven't fully recovered their capacity yet, so it it may be more of a, you know. Chicken versus the egg kind of a question, but likely is is highly influenced by COVID nineteen. We also have a good picture of our inflow, so part of the homeless by name list is that it allows us to see how many people are entering into homelessness. These are the average monthly numbers for two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, same color code, two thousand and nineteen is blue. The returning means that people have just returned to the list after being inactive. For a period of time, people are considered inactive after ninety days of not receiving services that are reported in the HMIS system, homeless, homelessness management information system. And so those folks are kind of cycling in and out of the system and that's. A place where we will be focusing quite a lot of our efforts when we're talking about coordinated outreach, coordinated entry. Essentially making the system work better for the people who are kind of caught in this middle ground here. Of these people, the people who lost supportive housing are folks who have at one time or another received permanent supportive housing. Residents, vouchers or placement and or rapid rehousing and these are the, this is the number of those folks who have returned to the streets. And back onto that homeless by name list after that, so. We have seen a decrease in new people this year, nine point five percent decrease over last year and then the returning number has also decreased. There's a little bit of trickiness with the two thousand and nineteen numbers in January and June, there was a major influx because it was the first import in. To this system and then in June, a lot of people were removed from that list, so it's around three thousand evening it out, we ended up with around five hundred and thirty six ish as our average. And then this year, of course, that's gone down a bit, so this is how many people are typically entering into homelessness on any given month, this, this number of one hundred and thirty eight is people who haven't been on this list. I don't, I don't know if it's year over year, though I have to ask that question now that I think of it, but it definitely is at least in the. Well, yeah, they count as returning, so yes, it's new people we haven't seen before, thanks for letting me think that through in my mind. And that's a significant thing, so as we start talking a little bit more about the hydraulics of the system, we'll be thinking about inflow quite a lot. How can we reduce that inflow and and see fewer people actually entering into homelessness through some better prevention strategies? And then next we have some in outflow information, so seeing how people have moved through the system is also pretty eye opening, so as you can see, these numbers around move to inactive. It's a thirty seven percent increase, so compare that to the number of inflow changes and the returning to the list number. These numbers are pretty similar to those and they kind of, I would imagine correlate pretty well, there's a lot of overlap there. Between people who are moving to inactive and then moving back into the inflow as returning, so again, a lot of. I guess churn in the system, but not in a way that's actually moving folks forward quite yet. Then we also have an average of fifty three people housed last year, exiting homelessness into housing. And that's per month, so fifty three per month and then thirty one this year, of course, there are a lot of reasons for that, I'd say. Let's chalk it largely up to COVID nineteen, but we also, of course, have had reduced services and other challenges along the way, so. We have seen a reduction in the average number of people housed per year at forty two percent, so we want to dig into that question as well and see, you know, what are the, where are the places that. Were maybe not handing off the baton as well as we could and and what has really changed over the last, you know, between two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty on this front in particular. Since this is one of the things we're trying to move. Way far ahead is exits to housing and I've made some progress on creating more units and yet we still have a lot of people waiting for a place. We are working within three categories and within these three categories, we have all of the TAC recommendations. Or the recommendations from the Lane County Shelter Feasibility Study. And this falls into prevention, so basically helping people deflect from having to enter into the system of support. Within the continuum of care, receiving services for being literally homeless, we want to help people stay in housing if they're already in housing and we want to help people get back into housing as quickly as possible. So prevention includes keeping people in their homes, so rent assistance is one of the ways that that can happen. Over this past year, the county has received, I believe, around eighteen million dollars for rental assistance. Through the state and coronavirus relief funds and the city has also contributed. Several hundred thousand dollars of that effort through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and some other mechanisms as well, so. We have all been contributing to this and paying close attention to it and our goal ultimately is to help people not have to enter into homelessness in the first place. The next one is diversion and rapid resolution and rapid resolution essentially means that. Once somebody is sort of at the front door of a shelter, so to speak, or looking for, I need help, I don't have a home to live in, or I'm about to lose my housing. That they can connect with service providers and get access to the right level of service that they need ultimately. To try to keep them from falling into this sort of support system section, which is where we're seeing all of those kind of ninety day returns and exits cycling back and forth. So hopefully we'll be able to increase the number of people who skip through. All of these sort of interim things in the system and are able to get back into housing as quickly as possible. Housing will of course include permanent supportive housing, rapid rehousing, which we'll talk quite a bit, a little bit more about later. Landlord partnerships and tenancy supports to make sure that we have access to units and can support people in them and then the tenancy supports to help them retain housing over time. What we don't like to see is a lot of placements and then a lot of recidivism after that, so we are really looking to make sure that we have the right pieces in place to support people once they are housed. So that they don't enter back all the way back into this prevention side, so. If you can picture this in your mind as an actual circle, we have prevent, support, house, and then we circle back into prevention. And hopefully we're kind of tagging that in on our tenancy supports and landlord partnerships on the end, and then finally move on strategies, which is. If somebody, for instance, has permanent supportive housing and then is able to recover enough and and feel like they're ready to kind of strike out on their own, they might need another subsidy, so perhaps working on. Getting them a housing choice voucher rather than a permanent supportive housing voucher, people who are in what's called a voucher based. Facility is are also naturally and kind of easily moved onto a housing voucher, housing choice voucher. A voucher based program is is essentially that the units themselves are with the voucher rather than individuals receiving a voucher and then being placed in. A unit around the market, you know, so those are some of the main ones that we'll be working on to increase that outflow into housing and then again. Being housed as much as possible after that. If that doesn't happen, which is challenging right now, as you know, we are in a housing crisis and a homelessness crisis and a lot of the work we have to do is really building out this. Back end of the system on housing, making sure that we have access to housing that's affordable for people of all incomes. The city has been working with the housing tools and strategies work for some time and the county in December adopted. The Affordable Housing Action Plan, and so we are seeing some good attention paid to those things, we also have an opportunity. I think so link a lot of the work we're doing with homelessness. In the housing side of things especially, to make sure that we can link that housing ladder. All the way down to shelter and making sure that people aren't forced to sleep in places that they're not meant to sleep as much as we possibly can create that system, so. I keep saying in our community, the housing ladder starts with shelter and given the numbers of people who we see visibly camping right now and who have. Not just shown up all of a sudden, but have become more visible for a lot of reasons, mostly related to COVID and resources. We want to make sure that those folks are able to land somewhere that's safe for them, where they're allowed to sleep at night and where they have. Some of the comforts of home and the shelter. So that's our basic system. And here are the ten recommendations that were put forward in the Lane County Shelter Feasibility Study, most of you are probably intimately familiar with these. But I wanted to just give you a glimpse at it, so these, I don't know that they're in any particular order, they're just recommendations that are are all here, so. Of these ten recommendations, we'll be focusing on nine of them, the only one that's not overtly in our plan this year is best practice training, although that will still be kind of. Working alongside all of these other pieces, because that will have to happen for providers and. And staff and others who are working in this world for this to all move forward anyway, so. We'll be seeing that happen as well, though it's not one that we're like, we're going to do this right now. And these two fall under those three categories of prevention, prevention, expanding diversion and rapid exit strategies underneath that will also add rent assistance. Support being that kind of systems intervention for people who are experiencing homelessness, oh look, there is best practice training, okay. Expand and coordinate street outreach, so connecting with people where they are right now, helping them connect in with services. Coordinated entry changes, making it more, it's easier for people to access the services that they might need and get assessed for the things that they might qualify for. Adding the seventy five bed emergency shelter navigation center. And then of course, housing, so in this category, we'll be focusing on continuing developing the permanent supportive housing units. We have many more to develop and a good number of them coming down the pike this next year. Tendency supports, move on strategies, landlord partnerships and rapid rehousing will all go. Pretty much together in the same project this year because we will have a large amount of. Twelve month rapid rehousing dollars that will be coming in to the county most likely in the next couple of months, so. That's a big lift, but we're ready to tackle those together so we can help people get and stay housed. And level setting about where we are, you might recognize this five year implementation plan. With the fiscal years, the full, the full meal deal started in two thousand and nineteen. With the adoption of these recommendations and then we're currently in two thousand and twenty one. And we have one of these goals for ourselves that we've agreed to work toward. This year we have and last year, we have expanded alternative shelter options, the city council approved over a hundred new beds with the. Adoption of five new rest stops and several microsites in September. And we continue to do that, pallet shelters are also included in there, so we are making some progress on that. Fiscal year twenty one, twenty two, per our original outlook was a place where we would then taper down the alternative shelter expecting. That the navigation center would pick up a good amount of that slack. That may or may not be the right way for us to go, given our current situation with sheltering, and so I have a question mark there. We don't have to decide this today, but I think it will be an important conversation for us to have around. Which kinds and how much of these shelter interventions will we want to keep in place? We also, of course, have been working on the navigation center, city council heard more about that in detail in January and we have. A site that we think is pretty likely with River Avenue, we're working with the neighborhood associations. River Road Community Organization and Santa Clara Community Organization. Since it's sort of right on the line between the two of them on our good neighbor agreements and some other things along those lines. We are working with an architect at Pivot Architecture to create the. Plans for what the remodel will look like and have a good sense of what a engaging process might look like for people with lived experience who may stay in the navigation center, have input. As well as as service providers and others in the community who have an interest and a desire to support this. The build and remodel is going to be dependent on COVID nineteen, has that facility, as you know, is used right now as an alternative care site for people who need to isolate. Or quarantine if they've been exposed or have contracted a case. We also are looking at fiscal year twenty one, twenty two, which is upcoming. For the target date to start operations in that navigation center, the state has some legislation that's being considered right now that would put a date of operation. Out at July, two thousand and twenty two, so we will want to make sure that we, one, are considering our COVID needs and honoring the purpose of that building. And then also making sure that we're working backward from that date, because there may be funds attached, operating funds or capital. To some of that legislation and we want to make sure that we are ready to go with that, so that is our goal and more will shape up on that soon. Permanent supportive housing is going, going really well, as Steve just mentioned, the fifty one units at MLK just opened. I'll have a little bit more of an overview with some milestones in it that I'll share with you about upcoming projects and and kind of when things are going to be opening. And then we've got the Joint Shelter and Housing Strategist, which is me, to initiate a collective impact process, secure and deploy resources, of course, a lot of our resources this year were. Of course, from COVID nineteen and also a little bit on the disaster relief side for fires, but we are continuing to do that and. Working on making sure the community is involved in all of this. Our twelve month priorities are, this will look familiar, very close to what all of those. Priorities were before, so. Of all of these, they all kind of fit in the same place, but these are the ones we'll be focusing on over the course of this year. First quarter is expanding diversion and rapid exit, so rapid resolution is a process that shelter care is under contract to provide. And a number of providers are participating right now in a training with a national expert on. How this can work best in our community and so that contract is underway and has started. And we expect that we'll see some good results of that coming down the pipe in the near future. February, expand and coordinate street outreach, this is already happening right now, but what we're working on together is. Identifying the best ways for the city and county teams to interface with service provider teams and to really ensure access across the board for people who. Need access to services and to connection. So we'll keep on charging on that and then we have coordinated entry changes and coordinated entry is essentially the system that assesses. Folks based on their vulnerability and then assigns them a score and then they are able to access housing resources through the centralized waitlist. We have a lot of work to do on our coordinated entry system right now to make sure that it's equitable and that we're able to use it as best we can. We've had a lot of challenges with that in the past and so this is going to be an important part of our work this year because it dovetails. Importantly with the outreach work, so in order to do outreach effectively, we really do need to improve our coordinated entry change. And we also will be able to move more people toward housing if and when we're able to to really make that part work better. And then, as I mentioned, landlord partnerships are a part of our rapid rehousing strategy this year and the emergency shelter navigation center is underway. Planning wise, so I I believe that we'll be launching a planning process for the architect and design there in the next few months. And then underneath all of this, I say it's built on stakeholder engagement, I'll tell you a little bit more about impact assessment and what that needs to look like, but this, this is. Yes, our work internally, but it's also work for and with the community at large. Excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm using the one that I sent the handouts with, okay. Anyways, so a couple of highlights with outreach that I think are important for us to think about because some will enter into a bit of a policy conversation near, in the near term. The county has hired a small team of outreach workers who are trying to cover. West and North Lane, we have a contract with carry it forward for East Lane County Outreach, South Lane and. South Lane is its own thing and so we, we are working to get those teams together. Through a dislocated worker grant right now and that is of course, one time dollars, that is for a really specific type of person and a certain number of hours that they can work, so. It's a temporary fix, but overall we'll be able to pilot how this can look and how it can work well. The city of Eugene has been conducting a pilot since last March, I believe, with Brittany Rain as the lead outreach worker and. Working in the, with the community to to try to make things a little bit better for people and doing true outreach. Meaning that they're connecting with people where they are, helping them with supplies that they need, building relationships and connections to services as. As well as they can and where people, when people are ready to do that. Camp supports is a slight, a slightly different kind of take on the world of connecting with people. It's not really outreach in the traditional sense, but it is a way to help support camps in maintaining cleanliness and hygiene. You know, and and dealing with any problem behavior that might be popping up in these different camps. The city of Eugene has been doing a really good job of working through. The City of Eugene has been doing a really good job of working through a new way to approach camping enforcement and rather thinking of it as encampment response and how do we want to work through COVID-19 in particular. But ultimately, we also have to acknowledge that we have so many people who are unsheltered in our community right now that will probably be dealing with camps for quite some time well into the future. So thinking about this as a long-term thing, camp supports can be, is one of the options for how the city and/or county and/or service providers might also support groups of people while outreach is really focused on the individual. Case conferencing is a way for providers to connect and talk through challenging cases that maybe they share. And then coordinated outreach coverage is sort of that geographic coverage and also subpopulations. You know, we have some mental health, behavioral health team building that can be done, a grant in the Behavioral Health Department at the county for a team specifically suited for that. Our second quarter will be continuing the projects from before. We will be planning to implement our rapid rehousing strategy in April, and we'll be on, our pace will be to house at least twenty-five people per month for the rest of the year. And again, those people will have assistance with their rents and, you know, funding their housing for twelve months. And so a lot of that work is going to have to then fall into tendency supports to help them stay housed. And then, of course, continuing our work on permanent supportive housing. This is our little timeline. The light gray is sort of the background on it, and then the green or teal color is indicating the projects that started, when they'll start. And, you know, some of them have, most of, a lot of them have actually already started. So rapid resolution, I mentioned, is with shelter care right now, they're working through that. Rent assistance, there's a tiny bit of a gap at the beginning of Q1, but we really, the county just received another eleven million dollars on top of the seven-ish that they had received in the past. And so rent assistance is going to be a continuing issue to deal with. And of course, coming up on ends of eviction moratoriums at some point, we'll have to really be thoughtful about how we're targeting this and who we're supporting. That's in the prevention side of things. And then for supports, and this is the, again, like system flow. First, prevent is to reduce inflow. Support is to help people move through the system as quickly as possible to housing. Street outreach is underway, as I mentioned. In Q2 is when James Yuell, the outreach coordinator at the county, expects that we'll have some level of case conferencing going. And that will be a really important step for us to help make sure that access is equitable for folks in dealing with challenging situations. And then we'll have coordinated entry, which will start, again, kind of late Q1 or late Q2 in tandem with some of this outreach work. And then the navigation center, there are a few different milestones. Q1 is getting that plan together for the architectural design. You know, mid-Q2 is when I hope that we'll have pretty solid design plans and be essentially ready for permitting when and if that happens in the next few months. And then Q3 is around program development and making sure that we're kind of identifying how this is all going to work with stakeholders, including those with lived experience, service providers and others. And then on housing, we have a ton of activity this year. Permanent supportive housing is going really well. We've all celebrated MLK Commons, it is gorgeous and amazing. So that's very exciting. Lease-up is expected to be complete as of May, so that should be, they're moving in a small number of people per week, just to make it, you know, less pressure for everybody. But that's a really exciting pace, so that will be great. And then Project Turnkey, as you know, is the funding through the state and Oregon Community Foundation to purchase a hotel, which the county continues to work on. So Steve Manella is heading up that project. The Nell is the name for the Eleventh and Tarnleton Building that Homes for Good is planning, which will have around forty-five units. So that construction is going to kick off also in May. The Keystone, which is the property at Thirteenth and Tyler, and this one's for families who are experiencing homelessness and need permanent supportive housing. That's fifteen units at Thirteenth and Tyler, and Keystone will be completed this August. And lease-up kind of date will follow that. So looking forward to having those resources onboard. And that's all good news, again, for housing. Rapid rehousing is, you know, I said we'll have quite a lot of money coming in for that, so we'll be looking at, one, dealing with the, well, like I said, these four all want to go together. So a lot of these milestones are interdependent on each other. We'll get into a lot more detail on these later, but this is sort of the basic overview of when we need to have things done for the project's work. And then overarching projects for twenty-twenty-one is impact assessment and communication refinement. And along with that really does go more strategic fund development. So impact assessment is a process where community stakeholders of all kinds can create outcomes and impacts that they want to see in this area for individuals' outcomes or for the community at large impact. My guess is that many of us share the same outcome and impact hopes for the people in our community who are experiencing homelessness and also for our community as a whole. So we'll start with that, looking at how can we build some shared ground and some shared goals together? And then working in how these projects will be able to fit into those, defining metrics and making sure that we have solid measures for how we do this. So very high-level tracking and defining metrics is a big part of this. A few of the possible metrics that we'll likely end up with are seeing like, when we're talking about success, we're talking about a percentage of people were diverted or resolved their situation before entering the homelessness service system. So that will be a big one on that, sort of reducing the inflow, decreasing the percentage of our whole population of people experiencing homelessness who are considered chronically homeless, so intervening sooner than later, increasing the number of people exiting the housing and so on. So these are just a few kind of sneak peek outcomes slash metrics that we will want to be tracking, and the process to get there will be underway very soon. And of course, I'll invite you all to participate. I would love to hear from anyone who has time and interest. A little bit of good news about humans, I have bullet points, but I'm just going to tell you a little story. I had a great conversation with Pastor Gabe, who was at the Westside Church on Eighteenth and Chambers. And as many of you know, there was a group of maybe twelve-ish folks living on the porch out there. And after a while, they started to form a great partnership with the church and started to do community service in the area, cleaning, planting things, you know, making that intersection a better place to be. That church has been on the market for about a year, and they had an offer. I just found out it maybe isn't going through, but that's okay. They had an offer, and so people had to move. But they were able to move. One of them is helping to build the microsite at Roosevelt. That's where One Village is managing, and so that will be set up with palette shelters. And so he's out there with them, and then others have also found a place to be. So they are sheltered now rather than unsheltered and have really, I think, gotten a sense of what they're capable of simply because they've built connections. You know, nobody's going to be perfect and fix everything all at once, but, you know, a lot of these, these folks are just, I mean, all of them are just people who are looking for a place to be. And so it's a really wonderful thing when we're able to invest in people and help them along and trust them. You know, I think that we have the ability to do that, and then they can learn to trust themselves as well. Money bits and nibbles. This long story short is essentially, I know it's gone for a long time, so I'm going to wrap it up. But this part is about the work that we have to do around identifying how we're going to deal with filling in when we run out of these emergency funds. We've been able to leverage a lot of them to make big progress this year. We're going to need to find ways to continue services and programs that will sunset with COVID relief funding ending at some point. So that's a big body of work that we will need to tackle in the next, right now. And then just the suggested JEO meeting. We, I think over time, it might be useful for us to meet quarterly. At this point, I think for this year, my suggestion is that we meet this time, and then perhaps in July, we could meet other times as well. And there's lots of options for how to get there. So I'm going to let you all figure that part out, and if you have questions, I'm here. So turning it back to Sarah, I think, to wrap up this part, unless you're going to go after comments.
Yeah, I think we should just let the round start.
Okay, all right, thank you. That was a lot of information. It was really a great presentation, very, very helpful and very informative. So we're going to do this slightly differently than we've done before. Both Commissioner Bernie and I will each keep cues for our respective bodies. We'll do one at a time, so one counselor, one commissioner, one counselor, one commissioner, and then we run out of commissioners, we'll just do the rest, the remaining counselors that are in the queue. So and we're shortening the time to two and a half minutes just to make sure that we get through everybody and everybody has a chance. And so with that, I think I'm going to kick off, and people have just kicked in, and I'm just going to go for Counselor Yay as my first one. So take it, Counselor Yay, Jennifer, go for it.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thanks, Sarai, for your, I really appreciate having the whole twelve-month plan kind of laid out. It really helps me see what you're visioning and what you're planning to do. I did have one question about the plan. Can you talk about next winter? Because it seems like every time we get to winter, we're never where we want to be. And I don't really see that in the plan, but maybe I missed it.
You didn't miss it, it wasn't in the plan. So the work that I'm talking about is very specific to implementing the recommendations in the shelter feasibility study. Winter is a huge deal, though, and so I do have good news. A new person is now working in the Human Services Division, Catherine Ryan, and she's the shelter and alternative shelter coordinator and will be taking on winter planning. We will be talking about lessons learned from this winter as soon as we don't have to activate Eagan anymore, so I'm expecting probably around March. And then we'll begin the planning for the coming winter then. So it will be great to have somebody who's able to help with the planning side and the implementation together. We, I've kind of got in the mix this year for a lot of different reasons, and the handoff was a bit challenging, but I think that we will have a better situation next year.
Okay, so it's kind of two different processes that you're doing kind of parallel. Okay, that makes sense to me. You had on your chart about alternate shelters tapering off, and you had a little question mark there, and I think we've talked about this before, about how that would be great, but it seems unrealistic at this point. But I did hear that we're having trouble with our providers having the capacity to increase that. Is that accurate? Can you comment on that real quick?
Yeah, providers have been really stretched this year and have taken on a lot of new things. I do believe that there's a lot of capacity that can be tapped if we work on it collaboratively. And so that's something that we're working on this year, is how do we involve our providers a little bit more in the planning and implementation of things before we're just saying, here's an RFP, please respond to the thing we just said that we need you to do. So that is absolutely a big part of why I think that our capacity is so stretched, but we'll be working on that for sure.
Okay, great, thanks, that's all my questions.
So I want to thank Mayor Venice for accommodating the request from county commissioners to go back and forth. Thank you, Mayor. And I finally figured out what all these hands in the upper left-hand corner mean. So given that, Commissioner Farr.
Chair Bernie, Mayor Venice, thank you very much. You know, I love these meetings, it gives us a chance to hear the presentations all at the same time, but more significantly, work more closely together in the future. I want to start with a special greeting to three counselors who are very dear to me, Counselor Zelenka, Counselor Slet and Counselor Evans. Counselor Zelenka, you were the chair of the Human Services Commission in nineteen ninety-five, when I was first appointed, more than a quarter of a century ago. You and I were appointed by Ruth Baskin. You'll remember a lot of the things we talked about then in Human Services Commission we're still talking about today. While progress has been made, we still are chipping away at the old block, and I love working with you, Alan. Second is to Counselor Cyret, who, when I returned to the Eugene City Council in two thousand thirteen, after my time in the legislature, you were the chair of the Human Services Commission at that point in time, and subsequently became a county commissioner, excuse me, a city counselor. Love working with you. And third to Greg Evans, my city counselor, even though I'm not your county commissioner, always good to work with you, Greg. Now, once again, these meetings don't allow us anywhere near enough time to talk, so I'm going to ask two questions. A lot of my effort is geared toward coordinating efforts and maximizing the use of resources. To those ends, you know, we opened the MLK Commons Permanent Supportive Housing Facility this week, and the county has distributed a hundred and twenty palette shelters throughout the county in team efforts. My two questions will be for Steve Manella, who's on the call, and second will be for Sarai Johnson. Steve, in terms of coordinating efforts, you are closely involved with the Poverty and Homelessness Board. Can you talk a little bit about the value of the coordination of efforts that is worked through the Poverty and Homelessness Board and its subcommittees?
Yes, and good afternoon, counselors and county commissioners. Yeah, the work of the Poverty and Homelessness Board is the coordination of all of the federal and state funding that comes into the region. The Poverty and Homelessness Board is made up of public elected officials from the jurisdictions, people from the private sector, nonprofit sector, and the faith community, as well as people with lived experience. And all of the efforts that Sarai talks about, we have a city-county team that work together, and we ensure that we coordinate efforts between what we're working on with the Poverty and Homelessness Board and the plans that Sarai has shared with you. We have a shelter subcommittee, an employment subcommittee, a healthcare subcommittee, a youth subcommittee, a subcommittee that looks at data quality, metrics and evaluation, and then a group of people with lived experience who advise our programs.
Thank you, Steve. My second is for you, Sarai, a lot to comment on there, but I'll go right to you, Sarai. My question for you is direct. You report to the county administrator and to the city manager by job definition. Can you talk about how well your coordination of efforts between the city and the county are going? And perhaps hopes that we have for the future to even more closely coordinate those efforts?
Sure, that's a good question. Yes, so we are one year and one week exactly into this experiment, at least where I'm concerned. So I've spent the last year really trying to get to know the different teams and the different municipalities. I have been really encouraged by the way that the city and the county have been able to work together on something that's so challenging and that each of these different agencies has different needs and concerns around it. So one of the big parts of what I've evolved into, trying to do more and better, is working with the city in particular on what is, you know, where does the city fit into this work and what is the city's priority? And same with the county, you know, really where does the county fit in? And along with that, also looking at where do other municipalities fit into this equation as well? For, even though Eugene has about seventy to seventy-five percent of the population of folks who are unhoused in any given month, we also have a large percentage of people in Cottage Grove and Feneta and Springfield and Florence as well. So we have a lot of work to do with all these different municipalities, and I think that Eugene is an amazing leader to look to for this work in Lane County. So I'm excited to be a part of both of those teams.
Thank you, Sarai. And Alan, you and I have been doing this together for more than a quarter of a century. Let's keep it up, let's get more things done. It's always a pleasure working with you. You and I have been together on this since before Betty Taylor was first elected to the city council. So bravo, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Chair Bernie.
Thank you so much, and Counselor Groves.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to our senior council and commissioner members for your work on that. And Sarai, I really appreciated the presentation. You know, the timelines, things like Gantt charts, those really helped me personally track where we are, where we still need to go and how we're making progress, so thank you. Basically, I have two questions. The first is, it feels good to see that we're at least making progress, even though I feel like we're still trying to run through waist-deep water. It's hard to make progress as far as we need to go. But my specific question, first question is around youth and what we are specifically doing to help them. I saw the Keystone project, which, you know, fifteen units for families, which has a component of youth. I know that there's contributions made to Fifteenth Night, which is a fantastic program. I'm a supporter of that, and I'm happy to say that just this last month, they are starting now in Churchill High School, which is a new school that they're coming into. And, you know, I'm hoping we can expand that to all schools. But I'm concerned about our youth, which are some of our most vulnerable population. And, you know, I've personally seen heartbreaking situations over the years through my prior work. And I'm just really concerned about that population. Is there anything specifically that we are doing besides supporting Fifteenth Night and Keystone?
Yes, so while the attack report slash- Yes, uh, so while uh, the, the tack report slash Shelter Feasibility Study doesn't address youth specifically. It really is just focused on single adults. Um, we have absolutely recognized that youth have a great amount of needs. And um, a lack of, of options really for shelters. Looking Glass does a great job. Fifteenth Night does a good job of helping people connect with resources. Um, and Fifteenth Night is also really interested in helping to expand sheltering as well. So Peter Cheban uh, with the city and myself are both on a core team of um, folks who are looking at youth sheltering needs. And what can we do to support that? Uh, there are, there are lots of also efforts around trying to get pallet shelters available for youth. There are a lot of liability challenges. In working with a minor population that is unaccompanied. So there, that's one of the big, big things that we have to really kind of dig through and figure out. Um, but along with that, we definitely have a lot of community energy toward this. Um, Youth Era has been working on setting up a youth hostel. Right now, it's a drop-in center until they can get the right insurance lined up. Uh, for liability, but hopefully that will be on board uh, in the near future as well.
I know we have school board members that are interested in this as well. So possibly that's an additional resource we can bring in. And then my second question, um, and, and I actually spoke with the mayor about this yesterday. Uh, we, we have, it seems like we have a lack of space for placement for large vehicles. Uh, you know, we have car camps, but the, there's just seems to be a lack of adequate space for trailers, camp trailers, campers, RVs. Uh, and you know, they're, they're landing kind of in the, the West Eugene industrial area, which is not the best si- situation for them without sanitary or garbage services. And it is actually causing some problems for uh, large uh, delivery truck access and egress from some of the businesses. And, and trying to find some solutions around that. In fact, I'm going out with our, our parking control supervisor on Friday just to learn more about the process. So anyway, I'm running out of time, but that's, that's my question. Is there any work on that?
Yeah, uh, very good question. We are always looking at sites uh, for anything um, that we can do. We do have a, a team made up of um, Christie Hammett and Brooke Freed and um, Matt Rodriguez from the city of Eugene. Dan Hurley, the Public Works Director at the county, Greg Rikoff and uh, myself and Lance uh, from Public Works as well. So we have a conversation once a week where we're looking at specific properties um, right now that are for sale or leased. Um, that could be a land use thing, or I'd rather a piece of land that we could use or a building of some kind. Uh, so we are exploring that all the time. We also always welcome uh, more creativity on that front too. And uh, you know, I know in Eugene, it is allowable for a property owner to set up a microsite as long as they have access to sanitation and hygiene. Um, including trash pickup. So, yeah, I, I mean, we have a lot of parking lots and a lot of, of exploration to do. But yes, it's really important that we accommodate that more.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of different comments. The first is, um, I'm very happy to see so many parts of the tack report starting implementi- implementation. Some have already begun. Um, and that's all very, very good progress. The problem I'm seeing is this vast gap between information that you just provided. And what the public is visually seeing in our community. Um, clearly it looks and feels and has escalated since our meetings last year. Uh, how do we bridge that gap and let the public know? Other than asking them to watch a meeting like what we're doing today, which most won't. How, how do we make sure the public is aware of what we are doing and the successes? Even though um, we, we need to be able to provide hope to the community that we are working on things. Um, yet what they're seeing is just not reflective of what you just presented.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Commissioner Buck. I, um, I think that one of the things that we have been working on uh, here and there. And on uh, not as consistently as we need to is a website for this information to be distributed through uh, for the general public. I also am hoping and planning to make the impact assessment process as inclusive as possible. So that people um, of any stripe really that has an interest in this issue can contribute to that. Um, which I think will also help shape our communication strategy as well. So we absolutely can and should do better. I think the, the main thing that we've been able to do is get uh, a few good pieces in the newspaper. And, and some, some television interviews and things like that. But we, you are correct that we don't have a consistent and constant communication about this, and we do need that. Um, so that is a big part of what we need to tackle this year as well.
I would, I would like to see something there uh, happen in this first half of the year. So that people know where to go to see what we're working on. Um, because they do otherwise email all of us. And we each individually take time to present what each party is working on. It may not be a complete picture either. Um, I, I would like to see at our next joint meeting, um, another presentation regarding funding. If it's in June, that makes sense. Where budgets are done, the legislative session is over and there may be funding there too. And we need to see that broader picture so that we know um, who's funding what, by how much. Uh, and also what other opportunities are coming down the pike. I'd also really love to see some metrics on how um, we're reaching rural communities. We know that they don't have the same numbers, but they are affected in very similar ways. And I, I, I think we need to be accountable to them as well. And just my last statement is I still feel greatly that that three hundred and fifty permanent supportive housing number is far too low than the need that exists. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Syret.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Sarai, for another great uh, presentation. Appreciate your energy. It helps a lot when we're having to see lots of PowerPoint presentations over our uh, council meetings. Um. I just wanted to take a moment to remind us all why our tack recommendations focus specifically on single adults. And that is because when we undertook this um, project together. Though, those were the folks who actually proportional to the need had the least number uh, of resources available. Um, so it's not that the county or the city don't care about uh, youth homelessness. Um, or any other subgroup of folks who are homeless. But two years ago, when, when we undertook this journey, we really identified that there was a, an acute lack of. Public uh, resources to rapidly rehouse and prevent homelessness for single adults. So that's why this particular work session is focusing on that population. Um, it's not to, to be exclusionary, but that was a, a specific decision that we made. I have a couple of questions for the city manager and, and then just a comment. Um, so we voted on the original tack report with the goals in there. And then Sarai presented to us the homeless by name numbers. And you know, realized our, our counts were off and there was an adjustment in the numbers. But I don't think we've voted to, to adopt those numbers. Um, I don't think we have. Should we? Do we plan to?
Um, that's an interesting question, cause I think you, I'm not sure um, whether you need to vote to approve those numbers. Or whether we need to amend the report. I, we haven't actually talked about that. We've mostly just talked about uh, trying to get more clear. About what, what the truth is in the county so we can really measure our progress. I'm curious, Sarai, if you have thoughts about how you would do that. Maybe Counselor Cyret, you could say why you think that would be important.
Well, because we were asked to vote on the original uh, plan with numbers attached to it. And so if that plan is changing significantly, uh, maybe it would be good for us to affirm that we all agree that that's the, the right new plan. Yeah, I mean, I, I'll defer to you and the city attorney if we don't need to. Um, and secondarily, um, you know, I think there are some other things this, our council needs to vote on. In terms of um, rededicating our resources. And I, I apologize, I've got, you know, COVID brain if I can't remember um, what we've done in the last two months. Um, but is there a plan for some decision to come back to the city council to vote in terms of our resources? And I'd like a second round, Mayor, if I can.
Yeah, we have talked about that quite a bit, just internally on the team. That with the county moving forward with the River Avenue site through the COVID. Would um, that was sort of the purpose of one of the last meetings we had was, is this going to be? Is the city council going to agree that this is the navigation center site? And if that's so, and we're not building the other shelter, then that does free up some capital resources, one-time dollars. That could potentially be reused for either some sort of uh, remodeling or reworking inside that building. Or potentially some operational cost. So we have been talking about that and we've just been kind of waiting to see what the need is before we bring that back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And now it's my uh, great pleasure for the first time with this group to call in Commissioner Preger.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, it's great to be here. Thank you, everyone. Um, I have three um, areas I wanna comment on, and they're really ripping on comments that have already been made. One, as far as provider capacity, I just don't think we can emphasize enough how important it is to think about from our respective agencies. The ways, the opportunities we have to shore up our provider community. Whether it's streamlining RFP uh, processes, increasing um, decreasing the administrative um, percentage cost we ask of them. Whatever it may be, I'm not sure um, what the mechanisms are for getting feedback from the provider community about. What would make it easier for them to do the incredibly difficult work that we're asking of them? And the resources that we're making available for them to do it with. But um, that is top of my list of things to make sure we're always considering. The other is this idea of expanded and coordinated street outreach. Um, and this sort of goes hand in hand with what Commissioner Buck mentioned about the work being uh, hard to find the, the, the work on the part of the public. You know, when we're successful at housing people, it's invisible, right? People don't, public doesn't see the people who are housed. They see the people who are unhoused and particularly unsheltered. So um. I'm wondering where the opportunities are for engaging general public in some of this outreach work. Both for more capacity and because it helps open folks' eyes to what the challenges are there being faced. Um, so I would love to hear about where and when we can send folks who wanna be engaged on this from the general public, rather than through agencies, be part of this work. Um, the, another thought about making it more public is social media. So many people are getting their information on social media now, not going to government websites. It's also a much more dynamic platform for this kind of work that is changing so rapidly. So I'd like to think about a coordinated um, effort around social media messaging. Um, the presentation um, was terrific, Sarai visually. It was easy to grasp a lot of information. And we, we could, we could be rolling that out through social media channels. I think would be really helpful. Um, and finally, in the last remaining seconds, kind of a big question. I'm new uh, in this role, but not new to the community or to this work. But it is an opportunity to maybe rethink the resources that we are bringing to bear and what we've learned and what's changed since we established them. For example, the Poverty Homelessness Board, which was initially created, what, about ten years ago now? Um, so you know, just the mechanisms that we're using and whether they're still the right ones and, and heading, uh, getting us in the, facing the right direction. Given what we know now relative to what we understood when they were first created. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. Uh, I appreciate all the commissioners and the folks at the county uh, being willing to work with us. On this and, and the partnership created with this. I, Sarai, thank you very much for all your work, for the presentation that was very thorough and the ongoing work looks daunting to me. Um, I, I wanna go ahead and uh, as I've done before. Echo that uh, uh, the comments of Commissioner Buck, that I think the three hundred and fifty permanent supportive housing beds is, is radically insufficient to the need. And, and I would, I suppose, kind of go off of what Claire was saying, that um, I, I, I think that when we created the tack report. And when we received the tack report, when we created all the planning here, then we did so exceptionally well. It was good to do, was a wise step today. But I think that the reality of, of the world has changed a bit since we did, or since we began. And, and I think a course correction is warranted here because I, I would ask. Sarai, you mentioned at one point there, I think a hundred and thirty-four, a hundred and thirty-eight new homeless folks per month was the average right now? Down from a hundred and fifty-seven or something like that, right?
Correct.
And I, I was trying to do a count as you were talking about the number of people that were permanently leaving the system. Which would leave a net number of the increase in homeless that are, are being served. But the, the growth of that number, can you tell me based on those leaving and, and getting into permanent housing? What the net number is of new people per month?
Sure. So if we, I mean, if we think about the average of peop- of the number of people who are getting into housing at the, over twenty-twenty, let's say. So the income was a hundred and thirty-eight for inflow, a hundred and thirty-eight per month. And then the outflow to housing was like thirty-one. Uh, so we're looking at a net of around a hundred and.
A hundred new folks a month is, is the rate of increase, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it, it, I mean, this is not, this is not hyperbole. I'm asking the question seriously. Cause I believe that by the time we hit the summer or the fall of this year. Or what will happen to the system we have planned right now when that hundred and thirty-eight number doubles? Uh, that's a sincere question. What will be the impacts, Sarai?
Yeah, um, it, yeah, well, great question. I mean, I think that the impact would be pretty dire. Uh, obviously, we already are having a lot of kind of system capacity issues um, with that, the number of people who are returning within that ninety-day. Or after their ninety-day inactive period. So um, yeah, I mean, ultimately, we absolutely have to get better at preventing homelessness. Um, which is a big part of the work that we're trying to do now. Uh, and then of course, the access to helping people actually get housed or get into housing as quickly as possible after. Um, the, I, I think you're absolutely right. The system in between that like red part, part, culture core is all overtaxed. And so how do we need to reconfigure that is a big part of the question. But a huger part of the question is figuring out, building out both of those ends of prevention and housing.
I think you've done a fabulous job of, of putting the tack report planning in that on-the-ground work. That's excellent. But I genuinely believe that we're going to have uh, uh, an impact over this year that will, that will. Require us to rethink our goals here and, and the tactics for getting there. I hope that we will individually, individually as bodies and then collectively reassess that. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, I know it's, that was my job to thank you, but thank you, Counselor. Uh, there are commissioners, there are, uh, Commissioner Bozovich, at this point, doesn't have any comments. Um, so commissioners, they have their hands raised, and myself, I'm going to now hold off until the rest of the city counselors with their hands raised. Have been called upon by the mayor.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Counselor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor, and uh, and, and, and hello, and, and thank you to commissioners, uh, to Chair Bernie, Vice Chair Farr. Uh, and fellow uh, Health and Human Services uh, committee members. Um, Commissioners uh, Trigger, uh, Counselor Cyret and, and Commissioner Farr. I, I look forward to partnering with you and, and, and uh, and I, I greatly appreciate Sarai, the uh, the presentation. Um, and I wanna uh, echo and double down, reiterate uh, colleagues' comments in regards to uh, uh. The hundred and thirty-eight folks who are slipping into uh, houselessness monthly. The, the nine thousand uh, uh, unduplicated folks who, who utilize services, probably a conservative number. And yet still double, I'm sure, what our point in time counts are. Uh, and, and, and the, the three hundred and fifty dol- the, the three hundred and fifty beds. Uh, is, is woefully inadequate. So I, I'm excited to ramp up Operation Turnkey. It's not a silver bullet, but it's one answer among many. Uh, and I would wanna know if there's uh, exploration beyond uh, hotels or motels. Uh, to look at, at, at former schools or churches or banks, credit unions, uh, empty lots or, or empty buildings. And a potential to even explore um, uh, a vacant lot. and a potential to even explore um uh a vacant lot, uh a vacant lot tax. At at the heart of of my concerns are um i- in a community in which we have small nonprofits, we have a a mid-sized city in a large county, and big city issues and clearly uh service provider capacity. I'm keenly focused on alternative funding mechanisms, broader partnerships, best practices, and communications. So beyond my first question, I'd also like to explore how we're accessible to our business partners and faith partners in the community uh to find and explore locations uh for microsite uh locations as well. So I want to think big and 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 also act and drill down locally. That was a lot there. The. Does anyone want to want to want to tackle that? And 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 ma- Mayor, actually, in my last twenty seconds, if I could just float this out for for Commissioners and 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 Councillors, uh, look, I would love to explore uh funding mechanisms that revolve around surcharges for events, uh consumption fees uh at at either municipal or a county level. So I look forward to that dialogue as well. I don't know if we necessarily have to have that conversation today, but if we could tackle at least the first part of my inquiry, please.
So, uh, Chair and Mayor, I'm I'm happy to take a stab maybe at the first question, and Sarai, if you want to add anything on the second question about partners. Uh, appreciate the the, you know, sort of the sentiment of going big, and I think we certainly have felt like in the last year in particular. Uh, we've gone pretty big. We we very quickly, uh, at the early stages of the pandemic, uh, went forward and purchased the Hundred River Avenue site. Uh, someone correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's around twenty thousand square feet. Um, you know, then worked retrofit that before we knew that we would get some reimbursement from the federal government uh for that piece. Uh, you mentioned Project, uh, Counselor Keating, you mentioned Project Turnkey, which is a a state sponsored program that Lane County is actively pursuing, and uh we're in the sort of Phase Two process of that, the due diligence phase of of that, and seeking to acquire um a hotel uh in the community that would serve as uh both emergency shelter in the short term for wildfire evacuees, and then potentially be converted into permanent supportive housing in the long term. Uh, and then I mentioned at the opening comments, multiple uh permanent supportive housing projects that we've either opened or are under construction. I I want to make just a, um, so I think the general answer to your question is yes. You know, we're always looking for how can we identify properties or facilities or other infrastructure, pellet shelters and and sort of new um uh facilities and and equipment and and infrastructure to house people. I think we all, we have to be very mindful of how much we take on in terms of uh new facilities. So the more we take, the the, you know, the more facilities that we acquire or rebuild, we also have to operate those facilities, right? And so um, remind, and this is true for the permanent supportive housing as well that requires service component. And so I think our feeling, and I'll speak for the county at least right now, is we're sitting on a number of new properties that we have acquired or in the process of acquiring, um, that are large square footage, multiple units, uh, seeking to house individuals with um with multiple challenges that will require service support. And so we want to make sure that we, as we take on those facilities, that we also have the capacity to provide the support and operate those facilities. So that's something, I, we do believe that there will be some funding available at the state. In this legislative session, we're actively working on pursuing that funding. Um, but I just want us to sort of make sure that as we talk about facilities, we're also thinking about all those other pieces that come along with acquiring facilities and property.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Solanka, and then Counselor Evans, and then Counselor Semple.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, the uh, well, first of all, welcome to Commissioner Trigger. Good to see you in that seat. Uh, wonderful. Um, you know, Commissioner Farr mentioned we've been doing this a long time, nineteen ninety-five kind of scared me a bit, but um, that long-term perspective gives me a little bit of a a way of looking at this, and one of the things that we have to remember about this problem of homelessness um, uh, not getting housing for folks is that this is a world-class, hard problem that nobody's really solved, and it's been baking for fifty years, and we're not going to change it like that. Uh, there are um, there is no silver bullet. There's a silver buckshot approach to this, so it's a lot of uh, a lot of different things that we're doing, and this approach is like that. So it's that ever incremental progress that actually helps me quite a bit. It's the small but steady movement towards getting there. You know, a lot of the innovations that we've taken over time, like Opportunity Village was the first time in the country anybody had done that. You know, the Rest Stop, the St. Vincent de Paul tents, you know. Not, wasn't that long ago, we had zero beds. Now we have over three hundred and fifty. So, you know, we're we're making progress, but a- as Commissioner Buck said, you know, we're not telling our story very well. People don't know this. Uh, and I I had a call just recently with this guy, and he said, we were doing absolutely nothing for the homeless. And and I finally toned him down and asked him what he thinks we should do. And then he said, oh, you should get these, they have these tents with seventy-five people and with home beds. And I go, well, we have three of those. What about these sites that people have with with garbage and toilets? Like, we have a whole bunch of those. You know, finally, I got him to say, okay, you guys are doing stuff, but you're not doing enough. And I think that's kind of where we're at. We are doing a lot of good stuff. Um, I think this approach looks and feels um, different than what we've been doing. It's a better approach. I like where we're going. Um, I think to go to the next level, though, we need to, it need, it requires more money. That's just a simple fact. I think we need to start looking at a bond or a levy to do more stuff that, and I think the public will support that. And then, uh, lastly, I'd just like to say, awesome glasses, Sarai.
Oh, sorry, I thought I was muted. Sorry.
Uh, Counselor Evans.
Thanks, Mayor. I finally kind of figured out to get, how to get my myself off of mute. Uh, and excuse me, because I had to dip and dip in and out of this meeting. If you've already answered this question, Sarai, but uh, Commissioner Farr and I, uh, several months ago, took a tour of the property that is on the southwest corner of Highway ninety-nine in Roosevelt. Uh, was what originally was set out to be uh our seventy-five-bed emergency shelter. Um, one, has any progress been made on that? Have we acquired that property? And two, if we have acquired the property, have we started the remediation of the planning around uh how to prepare that site uh to have, um, you know, folks be able to um occupy it and and live there over a short period of time?
Thank you, Counselor Evans. The the site that we had been looking at on Roosevelt and ninety-nine is is no longer available for sale. They're building other things on it right now. Um, that said, we do have a lot of work continuing always on siting and um finding ways and places that we can help people be safe and sleep at night. Um, so we do, in in fact, I believe you maybe had uh asked for this before, is is a list of available warehouse spaces and parking lots and things like that. So we are working with that, um, provided by Lily Stormant uh in John Brown's office.
Okay, great, great. I I know that there's some other cities that have used uh warehouses and other similar type facilities that they retrofitted to be able to accommodate people with emergency shelters. So I'm really uh pleased that we're 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 pursuing that right now, because I think that that will help us with the number of people that we have on the streets right now, and I think that that's what folks are seeing, is they're seeing a lot of a lot of impromptu camps that are not sanctioned and um, you know, are basically hot messes uh that very, number of my constituents would like to see uh better controlled or at least cleaned up. So hopefully, we can, we can get somewhere on that.
Thank you. Counselor Semple.
Thank you. Such a complicated s- uh subject, and we're doing so many things. So thank you for um the report. That's pretty amazing. Um, I agree with so many of the things other people have said. Um, we've done a lot, but compared to the problem, it is not enough. And that comes down to resources, really. We have a lot of good ideas. Some of them we've done, some of them we've done a little bit of. So I know that with COVID, the budget's probably a nightmare, but this is is going to have to take more money, and if it does need to be a bond or a levy uh or something else creative, it's time for us to step up to that. We we really need more money. And with COVID, we need this worse, as we know. I'm very grateful for the actions that have been taken with the money we've gotten from COVID. That I really appreciate that, and I hope we will continue to look at things that will last. I I still want renters to be helped in the hotel rooms and things, but, you know, if we can get things that will keep going, that's better. My biggest concern i- is shelter first. I love housing first, and yes, we need more housing. But the people in the in the the homemade camps, it's problematic for them. It's problematic for the neighbors. We need, we know all of this. Um, I, you know, Egan and winter stuff is great, but people need a place to be every day with, as I like to say, no fear of rain, rape, or robbery. And we need to get, expand our ideas. What if the earthquake happens? Where are we going to put everybody? You know, I I don't wish we had huge camps, but, you know, in desperate times, that's what happens. And and we need to push more for those parking lots and those warehouses where we can put cars and tents and big vehicles and big tents. Um, and we need to to work upstream. We desperately need more providers, mental health, drug addiction. So um, I appreciate what we're doing, and steroids need more, especially that that where can you sleep tonight? Not everybody is willing to connect with providers. Where do we put them? Thanks.
Um, Mayor, I believe everyone on your board of mine has spoken. I believe that Board of Commissioners, um, each of us is supposedly due in five minutes a homeschool good with me. Um, may I state some remarks in the news? Thank you so much. Um, first, as it relates, a year and a half ago, a, and and I agree with all statements appreciating this work and forgive me, but when I'm critical, it's only to improve something. It's not to be a naysayer. Um, the request over a year and a half ago was made at our County Board of Commissioners to start looking at, ask commercial brokers to look at vacant warehouse and other space. I'm delighted that's happening. I hope that our next meeting, Sarai, we can have a report that tells us or maps for us what's, where there might be some potential areas that something could be done. I personally believe that uh the world has changed so much in the last two years that I concur with those suggesting we may want to revisit tactics, strategies. There's a couple of things I don't see in here that is frustrating for me. One of them is how you structure incentives to draw private investment to partner with public resources to solve these problems. Uh, e- even homeless shelters, there are ways to creatively do that, and and I encourage um that to be incorporated. I may be in the minority, but I agree with Counselor Groves. If we're going to revisit, we need to include our future in looking at the homeless problem, which is, which are youth. Um, youth and families, that that needs to be built in, is my opinion. Um, and finally, I really believe that we need to also present this, um, forgive me, Sarai, I know you've heard this before. Yeah, not in just a systems perspective. Systems can get kind of abstract and boring for the general public, but in a client-centered approach, where it's clients' needs that obviously drive the stride, the systems work that is go- going on, and one can do that, think of a bullseye, client in the middle, not the system, and then the system grows around these needs. Um, so those are my my comments at this point in time. Um, I also think that needs to be, I I thought there might be a dashboard for this meeting. We discussed that. Uh, I very much encourage a public-facing dashboard um that we can leverage our wonderful nonprofit and business network uh to provide also. Um, those are my closing thoughts, and I appreciate you very much being here, Mayor.
Thank you, and I'm going to take just two minutes to give my thoughts, and then we'll wrap it up, right, pretty much on time. So I just have three uh kind of general comments. One is, uh, as we talk about the providers and following on Commissioner Trigger's comments about that, I, um, you know, recognizing that outreach has been so important through this COVID crisis and that we've actually had a proliferation of kind of new providers, these sort of ad hoc citizen groups that have come together to to uh help provide, and I recognize that best practices is not really on your work plan for the next twelve months, but I do think that uh that this does call for us to do some capacity building within our provider organizations and um, you know, some trauma-informed care kinds of uh responses and a little bit more of get our arms around that. It seems to me that that's a potentially a private-funded thing, a a foundation kind of funded thing, and could be important in sort of bringing our wrapping our arms around it, and this could be a role for the Poverty and Homelessness Board to actually look at that and help orchestrate that. What would that look like? A lot of those providers come to those meetings. It might be a good place to step up. And I also think of our CERT-trained neighborhoods, uh, organizations, whether, again, there's another group that could come in. The second thing is that um, um, I'm hoping that as we talk about the River Avenue site, recognizing that we have a lot of medically fragile people who are unsheltered, who are not COVID medically unfragile, but fragile in other ways. Uh, as we think about that shelter, I'm hoping that we'll be thinking about that as sort of maybe they have the, they that's a a pipeline for those folks that are camping outward, that are using walkers and wheelchairs, that they, I've been hoping, as we look at that facility, that we prioritize those medically fragile folks coming through. And then my third question is for kind of a a point for following up, which is, I think when we look at that tax report recommendations and those ten pieces, it's, you know, there are some pieces within that report that are clearly a county role, like the coordinated entry system, clearly a county work, county role. There are other pieces in there where we're doing two things together, county and city, like the street outreach. We ex- anticipate that working on that permanent shelter together, I think it would be helpful, and maybe we can bring back the steering committee that we had in the first round when we were looking at implementing these recommendations to sort of talk about c- city roles and county roles, how they currently are laid out, and if there's, if we want to adjust that. Because as we start to talk about funding and what resources are available, I think that will help structure our thinking a little bit about uh what we each bring to the table, how that looks. So I'd love to see that uh layout of those recommendations. And with that, I think it is one-thirty, and um, I believe, Commissioner, it is time for the city council to adjourn our city council meeting, and I turn to you.
Thank you, everyone, for your participation. According to Des, it's tonight, but it's really this afternoon. And the meeting of the Lane County Board of Commissioners is adjourned. We'll see you all in our next meeting. Thank you.